You're good to go.
All right. A meeting of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, September 18th, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Councilman DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Tangianno, and our board attorney, Ms. Steinle.
All right. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. May you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America as to the public religion, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
All right. This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anybody in attendance who has something to come bring before this board that is not on our agenda for tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We have some correspondence in our packet. If you want to...
Yes. So, we received a letter from Richard Oller regarding application number 21:506 requesting an extension of the approval for the subdivision on that application. It's block 117, lots 27 and 28. And the reason for the request was that the applicants were waiting for a DEP approval that wasn't issued until April of this year. And so that caused the delay. And so they're asking for an extension to November 3rd of this year so they can record the subdivision deeds.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or objections? I... Do I have a motion to approve extending it till November 3rd?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mealy.
Motion to approve extending that application to November 3rd.
Do I have a second, please?
Yeah.
Mr. Napolitano, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we move on. The first item on our agenda is application number 23:524, Globe Logistics Inc., 939 Edwards Road, Block 767, Lot 31, major soil moving permit.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and the board. Mark Semeraro, S-E-M-E-R-A-R-O, from Semeraro, Horni, on behalf of the applicant. As you are aware, this is a major soil moving permit application. We have previously provided our notice affidavit to the board secretary. As you know, this is a rather short application. We have our engineer here to provide testimony as to the contents of the application. And just for the record, this is the applicant is Globe Logistics, 939 Edwards Road, Block 767, Lot 301.
301 or 31?
So with your permission, I'd like to call our engineer.
Is it, I'm sorry, Lot 301 or Lot 31?
It's Lot 30.
Okay, thank you.
Just bear with me. It is 31, correct? I know that we had transposed the numbers originally on the application, Lot 31?
That's what the paperwork says.
Yes, Lot 31. Thank you. Okay, so with the board's permission, I'd like to call our first witness, and actually our only witness, our engineer, Richard Quame.
If you could please state your name and spell your last name for the record?
Yes, my name's Richard Quame, Q-U-A-M-M-E.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. And please provide the board with some background on your experience and licensures.
So my licensure was in 2008 in the state of New Jersey, professional engineer. I've served on Mansfield Township Land Use Board as well as municipal engineer in Mansfield Township, also Chester Borough. I've appeared before Township Council as well as Borough Council in presenting various applications related to what's happening within municipal approvals.
Anybody have any questions on the...
And you're currently a licensed professional?
I am currently a licensed professional engineer.
All right. With no objections, your witness?
Thank you. Mr. Quame, could you please advise the board for your current employers?
Currently with Ferrero Engineering in Chester, New Jersey.
Okay, and how long have you been employed with them?
Been employed with them since 1999.
Okay. And you're familiar with the application here this evening?
I am familiar, yes.
And this application pertains to a site plan approval that was secured with respect to the same plan approximately two years ago in October of 2021, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And as part of your preparation for this evening, did you familiarize yourself with the plans associated with that approval?
I did, that's correct.
And you also familiarized yourself with the plans as they, I would say, morphed through the post-approval process, correct?
In general, yes.
Okay. And we're here today for a major soil moving application, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And with respect to the soil moving application, we did submit our grading plans that were actually part and parcel of the original application, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And through the worksheet associated with the soil movement plan, or I should say grading plan, we identified certain cuts and fills that had to take place in order to accomplish the construction for the site plan that was approved, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And those particular volumes of fill to be cut and filled were recited on the soil movement application, correct?
Yes, as well as on sheet 14 of the grading, excuse me, sheet, sheet 4 of 14 on the grading plan.
And that's what we have up here posted today, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we do have a full-size presentation of that plan, and that plan was actually submitted as part of the application, correct?
That's correct.
Counsel, do you need it marked as an exhibit since it was part of the application?
No.
Okay. If I just may ask the board, I'm not sure to what extent if at all you want testimony on the plan or just the numbers. My inclination would be just to provide testimony on the numbers.
I would anticipate primarily the numbers and how it might affect the neighborhood.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you. Okay, so through the permit process and as identified on the grading plan, we do anticipate there to be a certain measurement of cuts and fills to be accomplished to the site, correct?
Correct, yes.
Can you please explain to the board what those volumes are?
So the volumes for cut are 6,285 cubic yards. The volume for the fill would be 8,184 yards. So the difference is approximately 1,900 cubic yards.
Okay. And when you say the difference, could you explain what that means with respect to importing or exporting fill from the site?
Yeah, so the site of the cut material will remain on-site, and then there's the additional fill material, approximately 1,900 yards, which will be trucked to the site.
Okay. And the trucks that are anticipated being used are what yards?
About a tandem, they're a tandem truck of approximately 18 cubic yards per truck.
So in order to import the fill necessary to be imported, approximately how many trucks would you anticipate having to transport fill to the site?
In the range of around 100 trucks.
Okay. Now, in our application, we indicate that the maximum amount of cubic yards being imported to the site per day would be approximately 400?
400 cubic yards.
Okay. And with respect to the transportation route to and from the site from these vehicles, can you please let the board know what the route would be?
Yeah, so soil will be trucked from Tilcon Inc. down Route 80 to 280, and then off to New Road and then onto Edwards Road would be the route.
Okay. So at the volume that you're estimating the maximum amount to be, given the volume of the trucks that we'll be utilizing, we're talking about a maximum number of trucks of about 20 per day during the time period that fill would be imported?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay. And where would the fill that would be imported, where would it be coming from?
So import, fill coming to the site would be coming from Tilcon Inc.
Okay. And if any fill had to be removed from the site for any particular reason, where would it go?
That would go to Jefferson Recycling.
Okay. And we understand that there's a general contractor, but that general contractor had identified who the subcontractor would be for the excavation work associated with this, correct?
That's correct.
And that's Tom Busky and Sun Construction?
Yeah, that's correct.
At Pasco? Okay. We also were asked for the number, oh, not the number, the actual hours of operation. We had indicated between 7:00 AM and 3:30 PM?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay. And that would be weekdays, correct?
That would be weekdays, that's correct.
Okay. So we're not actually exporting 6,200 yards or importing 8,100 yards, we're just importing the delta between the two.
That's correct.
Because we're trying to save as much site, fill on the site as possible.
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have.
Going to turn to our engineer and ask Mr. Tangianno if there's anything else that...
What was the duration, when you, when you plan on starting, like, construction to date, roughly?
I, yeah, I, I think it's as soon as possible. At this point in time, we believe that this is the final permit that's outstanding.
And you have about 20 trucks a day, how many, like, once a week is this going to happen, or is this every day for a week? What is the, that's a lot of trucks in a day, what's...
Yeah, the anticipation is, because we're running into fall and into winter, is to, is to move the soil as quickly as possible. I mean, as far as an actual construction schedule, I don't have that before me, but it's one of those things where they need to move it on as quickly as possible.
And you said your route is off of Route 280 onto New Road and onto Edwards, and I'm assuming the same route out?
That's correct.
So you're, you're only on New Road from Edwards to 280?
That's correct.
Well, that's good, that's a good spot to be where you are. I know you've got some restrictions with wetlands and flood plain. Any, are you respecting and complying with the DEP regulations for fill in a flood plain?
Yeah, that will all be, it's, you know, for number one, there has to be certified fill as it's coming in. And so, yes, that's correct, we will be honoring that.
And I could represent to the board that we do have the necessary DEP permits and approvals. And in fact, the reason why we're coming so late after the application was waiting for the NJDEP approvals. And then we had to deal with the scarce resource order that I know that the board's familiar with, which is the Ward utility. So we had to get an exemption for that as well.
Okay. And just generally speaking, I know this is outside of the soil movement, but heavy earthwork construction duration, any idea of how many months that would be?
I don't have off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. The members of the board, have any questions on this at this time? Mr. Matt?
Just one. So the quantities you gave us, do they include the excavation for the foundation?
Yes.
Okay, because normally that's excluded from the permits, I thought. Anyway, all right.
Yeah. It's all-inclusive.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other members of the board, have any, Mr. Didich?
Yeah, just for my clarity. So did we say that 20 trucks, about 20 trucks per day for five days, or is it more scattered?
During the regular working week, so...
Okay.
Other members of the board? Hearing and seeing none, are professionals, do you have any questions? Are there members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you. I believe that we provided all the information that's necessary to approve this application. This board, I believe with a different composition, previously approved the site plan for this application. We respectfully request that this request be granted. I know that the next step is bringing it to the governing body for the next approval. My client has really been vigorously working to get this done and start construction as soon as possible. Unfortunately, delays were outside of our control despite our best efforts to move it more quickly, and I respectfully request the board consider approving this application this evening.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing and seeing none, in favor of this application? Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Is there somebody willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve application number 23:524, Globe Logistics Incorporated, 939 Edwards Road, Block 767, Lot 31, major soil moving permit.
Second, Didich?
We're saying we approve it for, in terms of sending it to the governing body for their approval, I believe.
As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
We move on to the next item on tonight's agenda, and the only remaining item on tonight's agenda. Application number 23:511, Sir Persipony, or S-I-R Persipony LLC, 299 Jefferson Road, Block 736, Lot 7.3, looking for preliminary and final major site plan with a C variance, major soil moving permit to construct a warehouse with associated improvements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. Larry Calley, and the applicant. Thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate the board being here to review this. The applicant is eager to prosecute the application for the board. Mr. Chairman, if you would, a few minutes to frame where we hope to go tonight and the witnesses you'll hear from. Briefly, by way of background, the property is located in the SCD V zoning district. You've got about seven and a half acres of property here at 299 Jefferson Road. For the record, it's Block 736, Lot 7.3. You got there today, and you've had it for about 40 years since 1985, because it's a multi-story office structure. Extensive impervious areas of the property, multiple access points from Jefferson Road, which is more west, about 500 feet of frontage along Jefferson, a few freestanding signs out there. The proposal was to demolish the existing structure, but we raised the structure and put up a, about 106,000 square foot industrial warehousing building structure. This is a use that is permitted to this zoning district. So it's a proposed permitted use. We're here for some bulk variance relief in addition to preliminary final site plan as well as the soil movement component permit for the application. And I think as the board knows over the years, this township's approved that NC developed a lot of fine class A office spaces over the years. COVID helped kill some of that dynamic, office spaces are being repurposed now. It needs to be, and there is a lot of fluidity in the market, adaptive reuses, such as the case here with 299 Jefferson Road and the ownership. And, Mr. Chairman, members, this has been a well-evolved, thought-out development project prepared by Bowler, Atlanta Traffic and Howard Alcum, with extensive designs. You'll hear about this later, you'll see the wings and the buildings have helped obscure the use from view, notwithstanding it being permitted, very well-appointed aesthetics. And the applicant, through their professional design team, have endeavored to tighten up the activated areas of the property, meaning the buffer areas right now are approaching, we'll hear testimony on the number shortly from our engineer and support our planner later, but the applicant has endeavored successfully, tightened up and mitigated a lot of the buffer area encroachments that are there today. Height's coming down, buffers are going to grow, we're not going to go further into the setback than what is there today, and not just on our prevailing lot line, properties to the north and south of us, all out of that same buffer line. We're maintaining it, we're improving it, we're just adaptively reusing the property. And along with that, on seven and a half acres, it all becomes relief, and we do have a few bulk variance items that I'll testify to and support them shortly, Mr. Chairman and members. With that, the team that you'll hear from tonight, and this is a bunch of ordinary people, our project engineer first, Ben Crowder of Bowler Engineering, he's a scrivener of record for the board on these plans, he's been here before. Then we'll walk you through the civil design that's proposed, the soil movement testimony as well, as well as what we foresee by way of operations here. We're then going to go with traffic engineering, we've got a traffic impact assessment on file with you. John Harger, the scrivener of that document, is here with us tonight. The groups on the record as to the traffic sufficiency, you'll hear that this is an overly conservative estimate of what we anticipate here for this permitted use. Nevertheless, it still works, you'll hear that. We're then going to move to architecture, Mr. Chairman and members, which I think will be relatively brief, we'll show you the very nice skin of the building, how we're limiting the activity at the rear on the facade, go through the signage details, there's limited relief there, and then we hopefully, with time permitted, get into planning groups this evening, Mr. Chairman, put our groups on the record on professional plan and life exposure.
All right. We have some waiver items.
Not too many today. So we have a waiver request for the temporary contractors' construction structures and storage areas, an environmental assessment study, and the combined preliminary and final separate sheets for the final major site plan and preliminary site plan. Our office doesn't take issue with any of these. As far as the environmental assessment, the majority of the site is currently impaired with impervious surfaces, and the applicant's looking to reduce some of the coverage on the site, so we're okay with that waiver.
All right. Do I hear a motion approving the waivers as outlined in the report of, the ARH report of, what, 6223?
Yes.
Any discussion or somebody to prove, move, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, Matt.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Napolitano, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Okay, waivers have been approved, and let's hear your case.
Thank you, we do appreciate it. So first, we have our project engineer, and shortly, counsel, we will mark two exhibits, we've got polarized images we'll show you, and we'll mark them as nicely as we get to them. Ready, Ben?
Yeah. I'm going to carry my mic with me.
Carry the, you've got to be sworn in, you're going to carry the mic with you, and you're going to make sure that the things you put up are visible by the people in the audience.
I can do that.
So please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
It's Ben Crowder. Last name is spelled C-R-O-W-D-E-R. Business address is 30 Garber Square, Bridgewood, New Jersey, 07059.
And then provide the board with some background on your licensure and experience.
I'm a principal with the firm Bowler Engineering out of our Bridgewood, New Jersey office, bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from the University of Pittsburgh, over 14 years of site civil design experience, and a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York, and I have been accepted before this board as an expert in civil engineering on past applications.
And your license is in good standing, current in good standing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any questions on this? Nope. Your witness?
So Ben, you heard my proffer to the board on a high level as to what we've got up there today, what we're supposed to do. I know you're going to start zeroing in on the property, and we'll mark anything that wasn't in the record, as you know, as we get to them, if you could identify them as we go through it, but if you would, please, Ben, by all means, orient the board to the site, what we're proposing here.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, counsel, I can mark this as A1 for the record, just to introduce it a little bit more formally. This is an aerial exhibit that has been prepared by my office with this evening's date of September 18th, 2023. Before I get into describing the proposed site improvements with the application, I wanted to use A1 just to briefly walk the board through the subject site of this application. So what you'll see, as you had heard from Attorney Calley, Block 736, Lot 7.03, as I walk around, the existing conditions, top of A1 will be your northerly direction, easterly will be page right, conversely, to the south will be your page bottom. 7.46 acres is the subject site, all contained within your SCD V or Specialized Economic Development District. Surrounding the site to the applicant's side yard is the expansive parking field with solar panels associated with the ADP corporate office building that is further to the north along Jefferson Road. Zoowork and a clockwise manner to the east is the Mazda Brook Residential Community with homes along Emily Place, Jillian Boulevard, to the applicant's rear yard. To the south of the site are additional commercial office buildings, certainly the headquarters building of MAN immediately to the south of the site. And as we get around toward the western end of the property, which is the front yard or the frontage of the current use, is where it has its access along Jefferson Road. More specifically, two existing access points, one more along the northerly frontage, and then one along the southerly end of the frontage. Those are the two access points, and you'll see as we move into the proposed condition, our proposed access points are in a very similar location as this current access configuration to the office building. So we're now honing in a little bit more on the site itself. As I noted, about 7.46 acres currently occupied by a three-story office building. There are some parapet and building height elements that are over 46 feet in height for that structure within the SCD V zone. And then as you'll see on A1, surrounding all four sides of this office building are the associated parking facilities, about 438 parking facilities, or parking stalls, I should say, around this office building. Primary access point to the office is centralized on its front elevation facing Jefferson Road. If you're familiar with the site, the building is actually elevated with some of the surrounding grades around it, so as you go into this office building, you do have a series of steps, man-made steep slopes around this building that gets you up to that finished floor, that primary access point. As we move around the site, you had heard Attorney Calley indicate some of the existing condition with regard to a 150-foot residential buffer. So when a site abuts a residential zone, in particular the PRD 2 zone that is to our rear yard to the east, 150-foot residential buffer is applied. Current conditions, along that eastern or rear property line, 61.9 feet of green space. So significant encroachment with regard to impervious coverage. You also have a significant amount of parking spaces, there's about 50 parking spaces that are actually head-in along that perimeter, so as you park, your headlights, the operation are oriented toward that easterly or that rear yard. That office building also, if you're familiar with the site, actually has parking underneath of the building. So part of the element of the site where the building actually being elevated relative to its front elevation is, to the rear of the site, you can actually drive under, and there's additional parking facilities there. Also to the rear of that site, there's also where the office building loads, so you have a full dock, you also have a drive-in roll-up door. So a lot of activity occurring in that rear yard, parking, access, circulation, loading operations, and then encroachment into that 150-foot buffer to a green space width, small existing wood line of about 61.9 feet. Walking you through a lot of these rear yard conditions, because it is one of the variances this evening, and as we get into the proposed condition, certainly going to walk you through not only how we've expanded that depth of that green space, also looked at the building design, also eliminated the activity in that rear yard that I'm describing for the office building as part of the development for application. Also, what I briefly described from the existing non-conformity perspective, there are two freestanding signs at each of these access points, one along the northern point, one along the southerly point. The applicant with this application is looking to just repurpose those... The applicant with this application is looking to just repurpose those signs, reface those signs. No change to the two that are there, I'm only identifying that because we get one per the ordinance, so there's two there, no change other than re-tendency for the building and the use. So what I'll do now, split to A two, which I'll mark for the record. Is a plan titled Site Layout Plan Exhibit, it's also been prepared by my office with this evening's date of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. This is a colorized version, more specifically of the site layout plan, which was sheet C three oh one, that was included within our submission documents. We've colorized this plan, we've also dropped on the proposed landscaping improvements to give you a full bird's eye view, build out of the proposed warehouse facility for the application. We have rotated it ninety degrees, not to make it too complicated, but to the north would be the right side of the page, which would be our side yard, to the A D P corporate office and parking facility. Page bottom would be to the residential use or our rear yard. South would be to the additional corporate office buildings to the south. Top of the page would be front yard, and where we are situated relative to Jefferson Road. So as we get into the proposed condition, as you had heard from Attorney Calley, full demolition of the three-story office building, the associated parking facilities, in favor of a proposed industrial warehouse building that is approximately a hundred and six thousand four hundred square feet, you'll see that centered on A two in the center of the site. That building's positioned, full compliance with your S C D five zoning requirements with respect to front, side, and rear yard setback criteria for its position. As it relates to the parking facilities, the associated loading activities and facilities, those are also compliant with regard to your side yard setback for those types of parking and loading areas. The building itself, it's approximately forty-four point seven five feet in height, that does comply per your ordinance, that does have a height maximum of forty-five feet. As we look into the realm and the basis outside of some of the zoning criteria, as I'd indicated, under existing conditions, that encroachment of that existing residential buffer. Under the proposed condition, we're taking that sixty-one point nine feet, adding about thirteen foot of green space to the nearest area of pavement or parking area, and then we're going all the way up to a hundred and nine feet to any building or structure with the application. So you're getting the spatial separation from the rear yard lot line, it is a variance still, but we're adding the additional green space, removing that activity. So as you're looking in the rear yard of this building, it is all grass landscaped areas. We are providing a full three hundred and sixty access around this building for fire and emergency response. So what you'll see through here is a eighteen-foot-wide geogrid grass paver that allows a fire apparatus in the event of an emergency, would have circulation around three hundred and sixty degrees of this building. As it relates to our access points, you'll hear some testimony from our traffic engineer with regard to the change in use from an office to industrial warehouse type facility, but our driveways, the two along Jefferson Road from the current office use, predominantly in the same position or location for this proposed industrial development. We've intentionally separated the employee parking lot facilities along the southern side of the building from the loading operations on the northern side of the building. This building is intended to be a single tenant or up to two tenants, just based on the size and some industry standards. So the way we've designed this is two office buildings or two office areas within this footprint, one located at the southwestern corner of the building, the other located at the southeastern corner of the building. So at each of those potential two-tenant areas, new ADA parking facilities, certainly employee parking spaces in proximity there, and also per the new D C A statewide electrical vehicle car charging ordinance for E V parking spaces as required for that new D C A code. For a building of this size, your ordinance requires the parking space to be a function of number of employees, managerial positions, guests as a function of managers, and then vehicles intended for the use. So looking at a building of this size, we had calculated conservatively a parking requirement of seventy-eight parking spaces. We are providing one hundred with the application, that's a hundred physical spaces, but a hundred and four from a zoning perspective. The difference there between the one oh four and the hundred is because of the E V car charging spaces counting toward two. From a municipal zoning perspective, up to ten percent, which that model ordinance does allow to be a provision. As we then move to the northern side of the building, this is where the associated loading, trailer storage areas of the hundred and six thousand square foot building are designed, fourteen loading spaces on this northerly elevation. Across that is provisions for twenty-two trailer parking spaces. You had heard from Attorney Calley, and you can certainly see on A two, the shape of this building does represent a non-traditional footprint, taking on more or less the alphabet C letter. What we've done through the architecture of the building is recessed in the actual loading areas of this building by approximately sixty feet into that design. Recognizing to the east of the site is that residential community, that rear yard residential buffer, we're allowing the building and the associated design to screen some of those activities and those elements of this type of use. One of the other variances that we have with the application does pertain to loading stall size. It's supposed to be twelve feet wide by two times the longest anticipated delivery vehicle, in this instance, W B sixty-seven, or a length of a hundred and forty-seven feet. We are providing these spaces at thirteen and a half foot wide, sixty foot long, the sixty foot certainly selected because that can accommodate that tractor-trailer sitting within that loading bay without impacts to the centralized drive aisle on that loading side of the site. As we move into stormwater management for the site, we are considering a major development as it relates to N J D E P and Township Stormwater Regulations. Our compliance in our submitted stormwater design does demonstrate compliance to those regulations. That is largely aided by a reduction in pervious coverage on the site from existing to proposed. Within your S C D five, the maximum permitted impervious coverage is seventy percent. Under the existing condition, it's approximately sixty-six point seven six, and we're reducing it by approximately three percent down to sixty-three point seven two percent in the proposed condition. It equates about nine thousand eight hundred square feet of green space being added between existing to proposed. As we move into lighting, we are proposing state-of-the-art LED parking lot area lights. That's also complemented by some LED wall sconces, predominantly used for security at some of the egress points of this building per the building code. We did prepare a fully compliant lighting plan. It was a recommendation through some of your professionals that some of the lights be reduced from twenty-five feet down to eighteen feet. So we did accommodate that as part of a revised lighting design with our last recent mission at the entry point. We also put on some internal houseside shields for the LED fixtures to orient light downward, mitigate backlight. And certainly as it relates to our sensitive residential neighbor in our rear yard, no anticipated light trespass, minimal light activity occurring in that rear yard, largely because of the elimination of any type of activity, impervious coverage, removal of the parking that's there today, and putting back the green space in separation to the building structure. From a landscaping perspective, eighty-eight new plantings on the site, seventy-eight of those, though, are trees. Those are predominantly evergreen trees that are being supplemented along the eastern property line or the rear yard. As I noted, under existing conditions, and you'll see on A two, there's an existing wood line that is there today, no intent of doing any type of disturbance, we're clearing of that existing wood line, it's being preserved in kind. We're taking the opportunity to provide some additional evergreen plantings along that eastern perimeter to further supplement and create that all-season screen to the east. We also have, the last remaining variances we really have are pertaining to steep slopes. So as I described, under existing conditions, there are a lot of manmade slopes on this property. They're a function of building this office building many years ago. There's actually very small areas of steep slopes, but per your ordinance, you have category one, two, and three steep slopes, fifteen to twenty percent, twenty to twenty-five, and greater than twenty-five. Just as a function of having small areas of steep slopes, and then taking down the surrounding office building and grades around the structure, we are triggering variances for each of the category one, two, and three, as presented on our steep slopes map. And the last thing, or the last element with our application pertains to our major soil moving permit, so briefly describe that. We did submit an application, a revised application, for soil moving of approximately fourteen thousand twenty million cubic yards for the site, so that includes onsite cut-to-fill and an approximate import of seventy-five hundred cubic yards, based on a preliminary assessment of the applicant's contractor. And that is generally my direct testimony, I can certainly answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. DePiero.
Yeah, I like the plan, I like the fact that you have the sea, and the docking stations are shielded partially from the residential area below. But I just wondered why, you know, all those trucks, when they back up, make that terrible beeping sound that they're required to by law. Would it be possible to move your whole building close to the Jefferson Road and provide even more buffer, just to muffle that beeping sound from all those trucks backing into the docking stations?
We have a front yard setback variance, or a front yard requirement of the hundred feet to Jefferson Road with regard to the building's position. So a lot of the thought that went into our design was adhering to that front yard and creating that visual space to Jefferson Road. But what could we do in the rear yard? And one was eliminating the activity that was between that rear building line and that rear property line, as today you have a lot of cars, parking, loading activities that are directed.
That's all good, that part's all good. I just wondered if that sound penetrates, and you have a residential area right behind you. Is there anything else you can do, like a berm or something else in the rear to help muffle that sound?
Yeah, it's certainly the request of the board, we already have some evergreen plantings in this area to supplement the existing wood line that's there, but if there's a berm element or some additional plantings that we could densify in that rear, we could certainly do that.
I personally would like to see that. Either that or granting you a variance to get closer to Jefferson Road and further away from the residential area.
All right, other questions by members of the board, Mr. Math?
First of all, did you say that the trucks could park in the loading space and not encroach into the aisle?
That is, that's correct.
Is that with, just, that's just a trailer, though, right?
That's a fifty-three foot trailer, yes.
Okay, so the idea is the truck cab would immediately pull out so they're not blocking?
That's correct.
Okay. I know the previous plan had the loading that we saw, that we didn't hear, had the loading docks on the other side of the sea.
That's correct.
Isn't with this side, doesn't that necessitate the trucks backing up on the blind side? Meaning not the driver's side?
It does. So the optimal circulation around the building is certainly through the driver's side of the reverse maneuver. However, there were a lot of added benefits of flipping this building. One, given the nature of a corporate office building that's in close proximity to this use immediately to the south or our side lot line, but it also allowed us to lower this building by approximately two and a half feet from what was originally proposed, which also significantly reduced the soil moving activities on the site, but also allowed us to drop the general nature of this building from a layout perspective.
Okay, all right. And you're not adding sidewalk along Jefferson Road?
Oh, we are not proposing sidewalk, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zizik?
Mr. Chairman, yeah. So, so the backyard setback, right? It says one oh nine, hundred and nine, right?
To the proposed building, correct.
Is that consistent? Because I see some area where it's probably pretty narrow, I don't know if that's a variant situation.
So it's a hundred and nine to the actual building structure, and the closest pavement area, whether that be some of the area around the truck court and the parking facilities, is seventy-five feet at its closest point.
Okay. Now, the second question I have is more about the emergency vehicle circulation. If the truck and trailers are parked there, I'm actually concerned about the emergency vehicles flow, traffic flow there.
So with our application, we did run the fire apparatus through the site. That would include if all the docks and the trailer stalls were occupied by vehicles. We do, along the perimeter, it's about eighteen-foot-wide reinforced geoweb grass paver driveway that allows full three hundred and sixty circulation, even if stalls were occupied, to demonstrate that circulation route through there.
Okay, all right. So one last comment, really, I support Mr. DePiero's comment about kind of trying to reduce the sound out there. I don't know what the options are, maybe we can propose maybe even a wall, maybe, you know?
Well, it gets back down to performance standards. I mean, they're supposed to, especially if they're running it at night, there's only supposed to be a certain amount of decibels heard at the block property line.
Yeah, the applicant has to comply with the State Noise Control Act, from ten to seven and seven to ten, based on those decibel limits.
Okay, Mr. Napolitano?
Yep, thank you. So is this warehouse going to be in operation for twenty-four hours?
At this point, we'd like to have the flexibility that it could be twenty-four hours.
All right. This is a huge difference of what was here before. I know it's in the correct zone, but there was just a regular office building here before that was in the normal hours. So this is a major difference, you're going for a twenty-four hour warehouse with all these trucks. I had looked at one of your plans here, the tree removal plan, you're removing forty-four trees?
That is correct.
Where are those forty-four trees coming from?
Those are only in the front yard of the site and/or within some of the landscaped islands around the parking facilities of that office building.
But not a single tree is going to be removed from the eastern side for the neighborhood?
That is correct, that entire wood line's being removed.
Okay, so that entire wood line's going to be there, and you're going to add forty, how many trees, evergreen trees?
Seventy-eight total trees.
And you can't fit seventy-eight trees in that eastern lot, though, can you?
There's a dense row along the entire length, it also wraps around toward the northerly property line, and we're also supplementing some additional trees within the site access points.
Okay, so it won't be seventy-eight on that one side?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that. What is the timing of the full demolition, you think?
I do not know that, it might be something, yeah, so preliminary estimates, a couple of months for the demolition.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, one more. Okay, so you said you're adding more of a buffer of a grassy area? That's also going to be a road, is that, so it's going to be, what's there now? Then your evergreen trees, and then the road?
That is correct. So you have the existing wood line?
Right.
Then you've got evergreen trees that are being planted along that entire length.
And then that fire road you said.
And then you can kind of make it out on A two, but that's a geo grid reinforced drive, so if you're standing out there, it'll just like lawn area, grass area, but it'll be reinforced to support fire and emergency apparatus.
And it'll support our biggest truck?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Shaw?
Yes. You say you have only about two tenants, the most you're going to have two tenants in the property?
The building will have a maximum of two tenants, that's correct.
And how many loading docks you have?
Fourteen.
See, my concern is because residents are right behind, all the loading docks are on right inside, right?
That is correct, they're on the northern side of the building.
Because the residents are right behind there, if you're running twenty-four hours, tractor-trailers are going to go in and out, it's not helping the residents. This is my concern with the tractor-trailer going around all night long.
Yep. So we've certainly, from a building design and layout, with the orientation of these docks and the recessed nature of these loading days, from a traditional rectangular flex industrial-type building, have done that aspect. You'll certainly hear some additional testimony from our traffic engineer with regard to inbound and outbound trucks during those peak hours for a facility of this type.
So now the truck, let's say you're pulling out of a loading dock, are you going to go around the building or pulling out straight out?
Trucks pull straight out and head to Jefferson.
So they're not going around the building?
The only three-hundred-and-sixty circulation would be for a fire truck and emergency response vehicle.
Yeah, because, you know, again, if you're running 24 hours going, the residents are right behind you and it's not fair to them.
No truck activity or vehicular access with respect to the easterly elevation of this building and the rear yard. We're eliminating all of the parking, the loading activities of that office building that are oriented that way today, and we've turned them to the northern side of the proposed use, which would be to the adjacent ADP parking lot.
Somehow, that's our main concern because of the residents behind and you operating 24 hours.
Mr. DiPiero, you have a follow-up?
I would like that better if you took your building and rotate it ninety degrees counterclockwise so that all of your truck loading would be facing Jefferson Road and then in the back of your building then would be just parking for employees and that would completely eliminate any problem with the residents. You follow what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
I would much prefer that design so all of your trucking activity is on the Jefferson roadside and not closer to the residential area. And just, I haven't measured that, but I'm thinking you'd need a variance for your side yards setback, side yard setbacks, but I'm really amenable to do that if you rotate your building and have all your truck activity on Jefferson roadside.
Yeah, initial, initial kind of review of that is certainly, the building size and orientation would condense. We are, would then need variances on the side yards, both sides yards of this building. And then from a presence perspective, your tenancy, your office areas are now going to be oriented toward the rear yard, where you're going to have a lot of vehicular activity between the face of the building and that rear yard, where in this proposal, there's no activity in that.
Well, I think, if I lived in that area, I think I'd be more amenable to auto traffic, employees and visitors on the backend rather than the trucks. I'd rather have the trucks strictly on Jefferson roadside and your building then provides a buffer completely for all the backups when those trucks have to back up.
Okay, let us stable that as a team, surely.
That's my opinion. I don't know how the rest of that-
Did Jennifer have a question?
At this time, though, you have no tenants.
That is correct, no known tenants.
So there's, it's not a hundred percent definite that they'll be 24 hours because you don't know who the tenants are?
No, there could be certainly a tenant that operates during normal business hours.
Was there, how much office, was there any office space for the future tenants?
We had, we had two twenty-five-hundred square foot offices set aside for the two tenants at each corner of the building.
So depending on the tenants will determine the actual hours of operation?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Math, you had a?
Two other quick questions, sorry for monopolizing your time. Is another witness going to talk to the need for how many loading docks you have?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And on the back, I was looking at, I guess, sheet C-906, the truck turning plan, it doesn't look like you're actually using all the pavement all the way back.
Talking on the northern?
At the north, that end. Is that only to facilitate the access to the emergency three-hundred-and-sixty?
Yes, but to your comment, a majority of that is being provided as a paved surface for that access into that loading dock. So if there is the opportunity that we could pull that back, we certainly would do that.
Yeah, because when I look at your exhibit, the truck you've shown for backing, this only goes to about the edge of the building.
Yeah, so in that element, we could certainly scale that back to continue to preserve that three-hundred-and-sixty grass paper access for that fire truck.
So if you did that, you're, all of a sudden, you're-
All of a sudden, we're about a hundred feet for pavement and building.
Well, except it's just got pavement underneath the grass, but yeah, understood. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mealing?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. DiPiero's suggestion that you should consider a ninety-degree rotation because of the fact that it's going to be a 24-hour day operation. I would not want to live east of that application in the event that those trucks are operating 24 hours a day. Sorry.
There will be opportunity for the public to question this witness, to question all of the witnesses, and then later to make statements either in favor of or opposed to the application, all right? At this time, we're just gathering information. So much as sometimes spontaneous applause matters to the people involved, we need to be careful and make sure that we do not get, that we stick with the facts for the moment. All right?
I do have a question.
We have a question from our planner.
As far as the buffer on the residential side, where the additional trees are going in, what's that distance from the property line? Okay.
So it's right where the current parking areas are.
Right, so the existing buffer area, you're just going to add some additional trees to that area?
Yeah, and eliminate the impervious coverage through that space.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Canziano, do you have some?
Just going back to the tenant and the 24 hours that I guess seems important to the application. So I'm sure you have a targeted tenant-type use in mind. What, can you give us some more information on a 24-hour operation and how many trips, say, you anticipate with the truck in the evening hours, say, you know, after, after eight p.m. or something?
Yeah, we'll have John Harder as our traffic engineer. He's going to provide some traffic testimony with regard to his studies and the use.
Based on 24 hours of use?
This use flat-
Or daytime, because he has information on daytime, morning peak, and afternoon peak, but nothing really on-
Yeah, he may be able to opine with regard to that full 24-hour operation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by my board or our professionals? Hearing and seeing none?
Will there be testimony regarding the trailer parking and if items and goods will be stored in the trailer parking? Will, and whether the trailers that are parked will be electrified or running overnight?
It would certainly be a no idling condition for those trailers that are stored there, and certainly any type of storage of materials would be in full compliance with the township's ordinances, in that manner.
In any state or regulations that might apply as well, of course.
Those as well.
Right.
All right. I'm about to ask the public if they have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time. If you have questions of this witness, of this testimony, this is not your opportunity to state why you oppose something or why you're in favor of something. It is to ask for specific questions that pertain to what this witness testified to. All right? So please feel free to just, all right, come on up. You're going to have to state your name, grab a microphone.
Yep, my name is Suresh Rajagopalan.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Okay. My name is Suresh Rajagopalan. The last name is spelled R-A-J-A-G-O-P-A-L-A-N.
I'm sorry, you need to speak up, spell that again?
Oh, R-A-J-A-G-O-P-A-L-A-N.
Thank you.
And the address is 281 Raymount Boulevard, Parsipney. Can I go with my question?
Yes, you're asking this witness and his testimony.
Yes. My question is, what, what kind of materials might be stored onsite by tenants? Is that something that you would have any insight into as to what would be inside the facility?
If you-
I do not have any information on that at this point because we don't have tenants known.
Could you, could you make a statement expanding on what type of materials might?
I think, Chairman, look, if anything that would comply with the SED five zoning standards, any kind of that comes in is going to have to go call their own CMO and get a zoning permit, and they're going to have to identify on that permit what their use is and what it involves. So there'll be a secondary measure to confirm that it would be consistent with any resolution of this board if this were to be approved. And the other detail is, is, you know, there's provisions in the code that limit chemical manufacturing, chemical storage in the SED zoning districts, site-wide, township-wide. We will comply with that, of course. We're not seeking any reprieve from compliance with that. And to the extent there isn't any regulatory material of any kind stored in the property, like you buy an Apple computer, it comes with a battery, lithium ion, warning when you get it from Amazon, it's all federal guidelines. There's some state regulations, but most of it's preempted by federal regulations. Anything that is stored in this property will comply with all federal, state, and township standards, including the township standards of no chemical warehouses.
Can I ask a follow-on question?
Sure.
Does that include kind of waste? How would waste be disposed? Is it hazardous waste?
I don't think hazardous waste is contemplated being-
All right, how about boxes and things like that? What is the question?
The question is, I guess my question is, is there any insight into the waste management on the property and how, you know, if there's any potentially hazardous waste as it results from either the demolition or the usage of-
It's a good question. All, all of the details related to raising of this structure and removing the material off-site has to comply with various state codes under the UCC and other regulations. It will be in full compliance with that, whether there be any asbestos on the property or anything else that's regulated. It will and will have to comply with all standards. I mean, this is not a simple endeavor that can be done overnight where a guy removes his shed illegally from his backyard. This is a very large structure on a large property on the main thoroughfare in a township. This is going to be under review by township officials throughout the process of demolition and removal. It will all be permitted and documented, and to that end, I think all is protected before confirming that it complies with the code.
That's all the questions that I have.
Any other members of the public that have questions? If you come up, identify yourself.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is, first name is Sachin, last name is Brahmey, B-R-A-H-M-E. I'm a resident of Mazda Brook Townhome Community where this construction is going to come up. I'm being represented here, I'm one of the board members. I have my fellow board members with me, I have some residents with me here. Can I like share my concern or I just have to?
This is the time for questions of this witness on this testimony.
Okay.
Later, you will have an opportunity to make a presentation, provide commentary, whatever is appropriate and necessary.
Okay, so my question is, you said there will be fourteen loading docks, right?
Correct.
So the fourteen loading docks will be like in operation in the trucks throughout the day, 24 by seven?
We're, we, with unknown tenancy at this point, certainly are open that tenants could be a 24-hour tenant. They could also operate within normal business hours.
We simply don't know, and I think of the observation was, good question by Mr. Mealing, we don't know. It's very possible tenancy is not 24/7, but it is possible it could very well be. So at the moment, with no conclusion under the code, the idea would be to leave it open for possible 24/7 operations consistent with the zoning ordinance, but we have no idea. It could very well be something that shuts off in the evening.
Okay, thank you. And my second question, the loading and unloading of these trucks, is it going to make a constant noise?
You're going to have the daily operations of a truck accessing a loading dock, pulling in and out, but certainly all those operational procedures have to comply with the State Noise Control Act at the surrounding property lines. That's what it comes down to. That's a state, state code for sound level.
My last question is generally the demolition of the structure. Is it like, because our community is very close to that, will it affect the health of the residents?
So as part of any demolition permit, you'll have a health, health and safety plan that a contractor provides for dust mitigation, any other type of activity associated with taking down a structure, that is part of the demolition permit process, where the building will also have to go through any type of environmental assessment, abatement for materials that are environmentally sensitive, and all of that goes through that demolition permit review process so that that is in place for the site and how they intend to manage those activities through that demolition period.
Other members of the public, you serve?
Hello, my name is Ramesh Naier, last name N-A-I-R. I'm at 43 Ryan Drive. I'm part of the residential community there. So I have a couple of questions. One, will you be able to share all the materials that you presented today, some copies to us? Is that possible?
Absolutely. Because they're all on file with the township. If you reach out to me, I can certainly discuss with my client, we can do a copy, but everything is on file with the township.
Okay, so at least, because it's the first time we are hearing the details, so wanted to process it, be able to review it. So that's one. And the second thing, you talked about the demolition process, and do you know what is that process look like? Is that, again, just one of my colleagues said, the noise and the dust and everything? Will you be able to provide a bit more details on the whole process? You know, is that by explosion or do you, you know, what does that process look like?
Yeah, so the applicant, in a normal demolition sequence, has to file for a demolition permit that's reviewed by the township. As part of that, utilities have to be disconnected, you have to go through an abatement process, you have to have all your certificates in place for any of the building materials that might be environmentally regulated. All of that goes through, and then the contractor also is required to prepare health and safety plan, material storage and staging areas for how that area is maintained during that demo sequence, but also how they would mitigate any type of dust potential or track out of dirt or materials. Directly correlates to an erosion and sediment control plan that we also have to obtain certification on from the County Soil Conservation District for that land disturbance and those activities. So you'll have multiple elements of process in place before that structure can come down.
Yeah, and the last question, I think, pretty much, you know, the council, the board members mentioned here is whether there is any alternative option in, you know, moving that plan into that. I don't know whether, when you will, when we hear back on that, when is that a possibility? Especially limiting the noise and the truck movements to the residential, especially, you know, that's a large number of residents really concerned about it. So is anything that you can provide an update? Is it possible? When, when will we know that?
Yeah, so as a team, we're going to table for probably a couple minutes this evening to talk. We've not explored that option, but we'll certainly provide a response this evening into some of the board member's suggestions.
Just sort of a follow-up to what he was asking, what would be the hours of the demolition if this is approved?
It would certainly be within the township's ordinance for hours.
It would likely regulate that, and it would have to comply with maybe by eight to eight, I had a guess here at the moment, but it'd be within the confines of the allowable hours.
Yes.
Okay.
Which might be a voice chapter for us.
Yep. And other members of the-
I had two more questions.
So two questions.
If you could identify yourself again for the-
Yeah, Suresh Rajagopalan, spell my name. Okay, it's R-A-J-A-G-O-P-A-L-A-N. Address is 281 Raymount Boulevard, Parsipney. So I have two questions. One is, how will you mitigate- One is, how will you mitigate during the course of the construction and perhaps even after? That road, Jefferson Road, is a connecting road to East Hanover. And so there are a lot of residents that we traverse that to get to 287, and we also traverse that road to get to businesses along Route 10 and other surrounding areas. So the increased traffic as a result of the trucks, how will that look like in terms of traffic patterns and congestion for residents to move in and out freely as they do today?
You know, I can help you with that before you steal the microphone. Our traffic engineer will be at next. Our traffic engineer is going to speak her's assessment to the movements we anticipate in and out, what those peaks will be, what those quantities are and are not. So our next witness will answer that for you.
Okay. And then regarding the noise, I know you mentioned that you're trying to mitigate it, and my question on that is, how do you plan to, you want to be in compliance with the state act for the noise, but how do you plan to, I guess, monitor and make sure that you are in compliance? And how will the town or any members of the public know if you're deviating?
Well, I can help you with that too, perhaps. So we will be in compliance. We're not seeking any relief and real cooking from the state noise standards under Title 7 of New Jersey State statutes. There could be a look-back review, and this will be at the discretion of the board with the recommendation of their consultants. The board engineer might recommend a look-back. Once this is operational, they can do acoustic testing in the field, real testing, determine the decibel levels at varying times of day to compare what's actually observed in the field to the state standards for compliance. And you see this sometimes with generators where, in fact, don't comply with the mitigating measures. It could be a sound barrier wall, it could be more green space, which doesn't generate acoustic amplification, things like that. So there are varied means to address it in the field if you find that you are even slightly out of performance with that standard. But there are ways to actually test this in the field once the operation is underway. And we have the discretion of the board to impose that kind of condition.
Okay. So basically, the onus is on the town to, if they so choose to monitor the noise level or not? Because residents couldn't come in there and just stick, you know, a noise monitor.
Yeah.
Right?
The township has noise-trained employees in the health department. They're trained to do that. So if we receive a complaint, we'll go out.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Peely is our zoning officer, so she would be very knowledgeable of how that process is. We have a woman back here who would love to ask a question.
My name is Kilena, last name S-V-E-R-D-L-O-V-A, living in 25 Ryan Drive. My question is, I don't know if this is for you. Someone mentioned environmental study done. Who has done it? Who has ordered it? And what are the results? Because I think if you guys ordered the study, we will need some independent environmental study done because we're talking about pollution. We're talking about extreme noise level pollution from the trucks, pollution from the traffic. When Jefferson is a one-lane road, and it's not going to be good for everyone who lives there in Masnavruk Commons and around. So this is my question. You can answer. Environmental study.
I can help you with that. So what you heard earlier this evening, ma'am, was the board considering a waiver request from strict compliance with all the site plan submission requirements, and that included an equivalent of an environmental impact statement, VIS, right? They call them sometimes. And the basis for that request is multifaceted. One is, the proposed use is permitted under the code. Normally, you prepare one for certain, proposing a use that's prohibited because it's inherently, arguably noxious, where the use is not allowed, you prepare one. You prepare one when you're exacerbating site intensities, like coverage, you're stormwater, not know where it's going to go, or, ooh, that's being reduced here. So much of what is happening on this property, as I said at the beginning of the night, and Mr. Crowder said very thoroughly through his testimony, is that we are in fact eliminating a lot of the impacts on this site by way of structure height, by way of impervious coverage areas, the areas where water cannot penetrate through its recharge, the parking locations in the rear, we're enhancing the buffers, we're enhancing trees. So because of all that, the board considered a waiver grant from submission.
Oh, so this is what, oh, it was granted? So no environmental study? Okay. Well, I had no right to vote against it, but that's a big deal. Environmental, real environmental study and real traffic study, not done by you guys, but independent by the type of town. So my next question is, that's unfortunate. My next question is, what about the flooding? You have a disturbance in critical slope areas? How are you going to address that? Because that might be a big problem for people who live in Masnavruk facing your proposed warehouse.
Sure. So there are standards that have to be complied with to control runoff. Our engineer can explain the compliance here.
You're going to be compliant? Are you going to be hold responsible if everything is done in the field and then our townhouses will be flooded? Because right now, they're not.
We're responsible with developing in accordance with the plans that would be approved by the board and the functionality of those plans actually being realized in the field. So that's the level of compliance.
Okay. So this is, I guess, for my, so the board to consider, something, the variance that there one is way, way higher than is allowed.
I'd love to have the engineer respond to your questions.
Couple of things. So I heard a few things. Let me just address all of them. Stormwater compliance, we have to comply per township and NJDEP stormwater criteria. We did prepare a compliance stormwater plan. That has largely been aided by our reduction or elimination of some of the existing impervious coverage from that pre-existing condition of that office building. As I described specifically with the steep slopes, the steep slopes are generally all occurring around the existing office building. So between the parking area and the office building, you have a lot of grade changes. You walk up those steps to get into the entry of the office. Those are man-made. So these aren't natural slopes such as those that are along the eastern or rear property line that would be disturbing. Everything around the perimeter that one could say is natural and not man-made are being preserved with the application. This is merely interior slopes, very small disturbances, but it is a math equation of allowable steep slope over what we're disturbing. That is what's triggering the variance for those slope criteria or categories.
And so are you sure it's not going to impact? You know, I don't have an engineering degree, but I do see what you are proposing now is way over what is allowed as far as disturbance in physical slope area. So I don't know if it's going to be addressed.
I think this was, the testimony is that most of the slopes were man-made. These are not natural features that were cutting into the contours and diverting water to different locations. And under all circumstances, the board of engineering has prepared a plan, a report that shows local compliance with storm management relations complying with the township at state standards, which means the runoff is controlled, it is isolated on the site, and there is more than increase that would be otherwise impermissible in the town code. That is a design.
And one of my last questions. I know you don't know who the tenants are going to be. No one knows. Obviously, to maximize profit, it's probably going to be 24/7. But that's just my assumption. But because we don't know, you're going to comply with federal and state old regulations. Is this a possibility? Is it going to be cannabis involved in this?
No, I don't think it is.
That is, that is...
It is allowed as a conditional use, but...
They would have to come back to the board for that.
That's the short answer. You're definitely right.
We would not be approving that tonight. They would have to come back to the board if that was the use.
I hope you're putting it away now unless it's reversed. You know, I hope you will consider, you know, if you live there, and it's going to be, you know, well, taxpaying residents, and it's going to be the value of our homes, the green stuff. Thank you.
All right. Other members of the public?
Hi. My name is Rakesh Govenapur. My last name is spelled as G-O, as in Victor, I, N as in Nancy, D as in David, A as in Alpha, P as in Peter, U R. All right. So with your permission, like, I'd like to get to that.
And just your address.
Oh, sorry. I live at 162 Emily Place. It's right behind where this is happening. So it's really concerning. So with your permission, I'd like to go there and ask something. So just wanted to ask you a question, like, you know, where is the current construction? Where does it end as of now? Like, you know, the building as it stands right now, where does it end versus how far are you going closer to the residential area?
So the existing building, the three-story office building, is about 100 feet further away from the residential property today than the proposed structure. The encroachment is the parking facilities that are close to the 61.9 feet to the side.
So just to be clear, saying that the construction right now is going to be like 100 feet closer to the residential area towards the, what do you call, whatever direction that was. But, okay, 100 feet closer to the residential.
For the structure.
For the structure, so, okay. All right. So another question I had was, like, what is this area? Is this where the trucks are going to back out, backup and to, I mean, is it something like, you know, used for trucks backup or backup?
So this additional pavement area is when a truck came, comes in off of Jefferson Road, if it were to access some of these loading bays that are furthest to the east, it would come, it would pull forward and then reverse into that loading bay to drop that trailer off. So the additional pavement is for that loading maneuver, but also it provides that connectivity for that grass paper drive, for that fire truck to have the 360 access around the structure.
It's probably a naive question because I don't see on trucks, but, so the thing is, like, when the trucks, they, when they back out, like, you know, when you're backing a truck, of course, like, I mean, one of the panel members like raised a question saying that, you know, they, I mean, concerned that, you know, it makes a lot of noise, like, you know, beep beep noises. It's very heavy and loud. And I live right there, right behind that. And that's really, really, you know, the noise is really concerning and, you know, I don't see, I mean, is there any way that, you know, do you think that the noise could be stopped or eliminated or not happen at all? That's a major concern.
Well, the trucks are required to have that backup beeper as they're going into that loading space. What we've decided to do through the architectural design of the building is to have those loading bays recess 60 feet in so that you have some sound attenuation from the actual structure, but then also increasing that green space depth from that eastern or rear yard to where even this first loading bay would presumably be situated on that building, not necessarily the structure, but eliminating all the activity in that rear yard and pushing those 14 bays more centralized into that northerly facade of that building. So you're not having bays, you know, right at the corner of the building. They're significantly in to that actual structure.
Other members of the public?
My last name is...
Use the microphone, please.
My last name is Karbajchinska, K like N-A, R like Rover, P as Boy, A as Apple, C as Charlie, H, I, N like Nancy, S, P, A Y A.
Can you speak into the microphone?
It's all Alpha, but...
Can you speak into the microphone?
150 Emily Place.
I'm sorry.
Yes, you're good. You're good.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you please state your name again for the record? You don't have to spell out the whole name.
Karbajchinska, yeah.
Okay.
It's easy.
And your address is 150 Emily?
Yes, 150. Let's look right now.
Can you just hold the mic closer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You look only on the east side, and you think that residents live only on the east side, but it's not true. Residents live to the left, to the right. And the residents who live on the right, they're like all, like diagonal. It's not straight, but it's diagonal. And on the diagonal, what you see, loading truck, 24/7, all noise, and they, if, they propose...
Please hold the microphone closer to you, ma'am.
They propose 3 and whatever for the east, but nothing for the north because all noise, noise will be to the north. And my house is exactly on the diagonal. And what will, and I don't, I live in the residential area. I don't live in an industrial area. And it will be almost impossible to live there.
Did you have a question of the engineer?
Yes, I have a question. It should be something different because before it was office space. Office space, it was absolutely silent. And parking lot, it is nothing. It is not tracking load. You agree with me? Who won't leave near this? I don't. No, it's personal. If it will be 90 degrees and load and will go from the Jefferson law, Jefferson Road, it will get much less noise. Or if it will be some sport facility or something different.
You're moving into commentary at this point, which there'll be plenty of...
No, no. I am really commentary because everything, what he talked about, he talked about east residential area, but residential area connected to the north of this, what, this is north. And on the...
That's west.
This is...
That's north, yes.
Yes, this is north. And on this north, what all here is residential area, and all this noise will go because noise not go right now, right here. Noise going to go around. Is that correct? So all these residents will be with this noise 24/7. And I think that this absolutely correct question to this engineer.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other members of the public have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Have...
My name is Priti Desai, D-E-S-A-I. And I live in 1, 228 Emily Place, Masnavruk. So my question is that when the trucks are going to back up, right? So they're going to go all the way there because I live exactly right behind there. And when they were evacuating the office, I wasn't able to sleep at night because only one or two trucks, they were making too much noise. So when these trucks are going to, because they, all trucks are not, suppose two, three trucks are backing up at the same time. So somebody has to go all the way into our side in the east. They're not going to go, there is not that much of the room that all the trucks can move back at the same time. So, and they will be keep running. So what about the pollution? Because diesel is very bad for health because it can create so many problems and illness. So do you have thought about like how they're going to back up? Like they're going to back up straight or they're going to back up like this? Like if two, three trucks back up at the same time, they have enough room?
If you can get the microphone to the...
Yeah. Our traffic engineer is certainly going to come up to provide testimony on the ingress, egress trips during these peak hours with regard to the small amount of loading days on this facility for the site.
Because 18 trucks, 19 trucks, you have to go back up like four or five trucks. You have to go make a room somewhere.
Yeah. And this was not designed to not work properly because then no tenants are going to come here, right? So our traffic engineer will discuss how the trucks will maneuver. You heard Mr. Crowder testify as to the safety maneuver of the 360 for the fire truck apparatus. Our traffic engineer, who will be our next witness shortly, once the public includes the questions now, will discuss when we expect vehicles to come and go based upon this use and based upon the size of this structure and location, and how they will maneuver and orient themselves, hog to and onto the property as they make those trips to the property. You can hear that. It's our next witness.
And is there any, like, in the future, they should make like electric trucks? So is there any plan, like, you should hire somebody who use the electric trucks? So we don't have to worry about pollution or noise or any, noise will be the factor, but still pollution will be more problem than I would say noise. Noise is annoying, but still pollution, I would be concerned about my health.
So the electric truck is not a... So, the, the electric truck is not a consideration at the moment? The state has mandated requirements to allow for electric vehicle charging for passenger vehicles, that's a state requirement, we comply with that on this plan?
I thought something like about, like, up to in 2000, during certain of time, there should be electric, more trucks should be there too, like, is there any? I'm not sure, but I'm just wondering. Like, maybe they require to have all electric trucks in the future, but I don't know how lo, how long it's going to take.
I think those are initiatives that aspects of the federal government are pushing for, but none of that is required at the moment, none of that is on any plan you're going to see in this state or any other at the moment.
Yeah, because pollution will be the biggest factor, because I live so close to that building, and every night I can hear the noise, and I hear, so, 22 trucks, I'm really concerned about it. Thank you, anyway.
Yep, you have one more question back there?
I don't need the mic, I just wanted to ask.
You need the, you do have. You need the mic so that the record of this meeting can be, identify yourself again.
Yeah, so, my name is Ramesh Nayar, N A Y R, last name, 43 Ryan Drive. So, it's a question, I'm, I'm trying to figure out when to ask the question. So, earlier I heard that there is no need to have an environment study. So, considering, it's around 150, 160 people directly there, around 500, 600 people, ADP next to that, and the extended community, is it possible to reconsider an environment study before we even start it? So, that, there is, there is a large number of people impacted. It's a question to the board, not directly, so I'm, I'm not sure where to raise it, but just a question. Thank you.
The environmental study, impact study report was part of a waiver granted by the board in order to hear this application. The applicant did, does not need to provide the environmental study based on what our professionals recommended to the board. So, we can't, it's not going to be required by the board at this time.
All right, we're going to be taking a break here. We're going to take about a 10-minute break. All right. We are reconvening tonight's meeting. Nora, would you call the role, please?
Deeds.
Yeah.
De Piero.
Here.
Neely.
Here.
Matt.
Present.
Apolatono.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
All right, counselor, you had an interesting first part of this meeting here. If you.
Name the place, Mr. Chairman. Our next witness, the batting one, will be our traffic engineer, John Harder of Atlantic Traffic Design.
Before we, before we get into that, I'm going to, as you can see, we obviously have a lot of people who are going to be presenting questions for your witnesses, and who are going to discuss this, so I don't anticipate that we'll be able to get through this case tonight, because we will have a 10:15 curfew tonight, so that's an hour from now. Thank you.
It's already past my bedtime, I didn't.
I, I understand that.
We, we've heard a lot of good comments and suggestions from board members, we've heard our neighbors loud and clear. We know we're going to be coming back, we're going to see if we can consider and implement some of the board ideas, some of our neighbors' concerns between now and another public meeting. We anticipate concluding this evening with Mr. Harder's direct testimony, hopefully going through the entirety of cross-examination. Nothing about Mr. Harder's testimony is going to change based on the site structure and this use, so we can imagine bringing him back, we can get to and through Mr. Harder's direct across, but that's where we plan to leave it this evening, Mr. Chairman, whether it's 10:15 or sooner.
Okay. Very good. Does the, the port, does the public understand tonight we're going to conclude the meeting at 10:15 regardless whether we've come to a conclusion or not, which we do not anticipate that we will come to a conclusion tonight? The applicant indicates that they are going to think about the things that were said tonight and may, I underline the word may, change their application somewhat. So.
Also, Mr. Chairman, so with that, our project traffic engineer, John Harder, who will swear and qualify shortly.
All right. Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, provide your business address for the record, and the board, provide the board with some background on your experience and licensure.
Okay, John Harder, H A R T E R, Principal of Atlantic Traffic, and I'm located at 30 Independence Boulevard in Warren, New Jersey, and I had been a traffic engineer with a civil engineering background, after the science of civil engineering at Lehigh University. I've been in the industry about 30, just over 30 years. My focus is on traffic studies, parking studies, intersection design, and the like, and I'm licensed in this state and about nine others, and I've testified in person before, and over 150 municipalities in New Jersey, and accepted as an expert.
And your license is current and in good standing?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions on this, the experts bona fides at this point? No? Counselor?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, so, John, before we get started, your office is fully familiar with site plans on file before the board as well as the architectural plans, is that right?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the operations to the extent that we know tenancy is likely to have two tenants for this 106,000 square foot structure, but no specific tenants identified to date.
That's right.
And you're also prepared a traffic impact assessment previously submitted to the board in connection with this application, correct?
Yes.
So, John, if you would, I'd like you to take the board through the benefit of your analysis conclusions, bearing in mind a few things that, that came to light this evening. One being what you would expect to see by way of overnight use and operations on a property this size, given the locale where we are.
If you could stay close to the microphone.
Certainly, Sharon.
I'm getting indications that some of the people way in the back are having.
The roadway system we, certainly, the roadway system we find ourselves on, the size of the structure and the use is allowed in this SCP-5 zone, what you can glean from that as to what you would expect to see by way of overnight use on the property, and what type of users you would not expect to see here also, given the size of the structure, how it's oriented, how the docks are situated, and the like, I should go through your testimony if you could, John.
Sure, so, just, I'll, I'll try to get to the point here, because normally a traffic's impact analysis, we call it in this case, where we've gone out and collected account of the roadway and analyzed driveways in this case.
Mr. Harder, can you pull the mic closer?
Oh, sure. So. Senator Gordon.
Well, it's, it's not for me, it's for, it's for everybody else who can't hear you.
Sure. So, typically for a use where you're going from a land use that was previously, you know, occupied and active, in this case, it was an office building with three stories of just over 150,000 square feet, and then to another use, in this case, 106,400 square foot industrial warehouse facility, when the trip generation is being dramatically reduced, which it is, we would typically not do a full traffic study. We would usually just show based on industry standards, which is the ITE, so I'll talk about the ITE a number of times tonight, Gordon's very familiar with the ITE, we're both affiliated with that group, and that's the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and they compile research from many, many studies of different land uses for trip generation, which is site traffic, and what's the projections for a site. And that's typically done based on the building area. So, as I said, you know, the, the large office is being reduced in size to a smaller warehouse type building. And when you look at the trip generation, traffic engineers usually focus on peak hours, so when we did traffic counts for the study, it's, it's a weekday morning period commuter, and then in the evening, weekday evening commuter period. And then we, we do the data collection and we find a peak hour from the existing traffic counts on the roadway, in this case, Jefferson Road, and then we would project trip generation for those, those peak hours. And, and when we do that, to put it, you know, in simple terms, we found that the office in the morning would generate approximately three times as much traffic in the morning peak hour, and in the evening peak hour, about five times as much. So, from a traffic perspective, I heard a comment about, well, what is the, the impact of the use on Route 10 was mentioned, I heard that from the audience. Well, it's, it's actually quite a bit of a reduction from what was previously there. And we, what we did is we looked at the land use and ITE that they've, they call land use 150, which is warehousing, and that is really, we feel a pretty, quite an appropriate land use here. ITE for the morning and evening peak hour, studied 40 different sites that are comparable. And then we also looked at another land use, which is fairly similar, which is called light industrial, and that's land use 110. And ITE has also studied for the morning and evening peak hour, about 40 sites as well, give or take. And we found the light industrial was slightly higher in the trip generation, so we use that for the peak hour trip generation. In terms of truck trip generation, ITE research shows that the warehouse land use 150 is a bit higher, so we actually used a combination of, of the trucks from the warehousing land use and the vehicle trips or passenger cars from the light industrial land use. So, we were conservative. And from that, if we, if we now talk about truck trips, in the, the two peak hours I, I talked about earlier, the morning peak hour, which is, we found from our traffic counts, in this case, was 8 to 9 in the morning, and the evening peak hour, 5 to 6 on a weekday, we, we also looked at what would the truck trip generation be at the same time? And the indication from ITE research is two trips in the morning for a truck, morning peak hour, so one truck in, one truck out in an hour, and then in the evening peak hour, just two trucks in and one out. So, a very limited amount of tractor-trailer traffic. In terms of, well, what is the, the highest peak hour in the day? So, we refer to that as usually the peak hour of the generator, so that the sites peak. And for a truck, activity at a warehouse land use 150, the ITE research indicates that either 10 and, 10 to 11 in the morning or 11 to noon is the, are the two peak hours when the site would generate the highest volume for trucks, and that was found to be three trucks in in an hour and four trucks out. So, the question about how do trucks come in and operate and with 14 bays, and how do they get in and out without conflict? Well, there's plenty of room for those being, being 14 bays, and the trucks are coming in are very infrequent. So, with, with three coming in an hour, the busiest hour of the entire day, that's a truck every 20 minutes, and I said there were four outbound in the peak hour, so that's a truck every 15 minutes. So, that's good, because that's usually the time of day on the road network when volumes are not as high as they would be at other points in the day, 11, say 10 to, to noon, late morning. So, the ITE, the, the way we can look at trucks throughout the day, and that's where I was just talking about the 10 to noon, is they've studied about a dozen sites, very specifically with truck trip generation, and broken out by hour, the percentage of trucks for the land use 150 warehouse expected in and out by hour. So, that, that's how I came up with the, the numbers that you just, just provided to the board. And overnight, what, the size of warehouse or, or the light industrial use that we're talking about, we, when you run the trip generation for trucks, you don't see any activity 10 to 11, 11 to midnight, and up until 2 in the morning, I don't see any activity. It's when I get to 2 in the morning, I start, I see one truck in an hour, 3 to 4, I see one, one truck, and it just progressively, progressively gets slightly added trucks at each hour as you get into the late morning, and up to that maximum of, of four in and three out, that I described. So, when we, I don't, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on the traffic analysis, but we followed industry standards, and as expected, because there's less traffic generated, and we can, even if we consider the truck percentage of, of volume that's being added, so the trucks are slightly increased than the office generated, we, we find that the operations are better if we develop the site as, as proposed versus the prior office use. The levels of service at each, each driveway was found to be C or better, and in, you know, traffic terms, we get concerned in, with studies when we have E and F levels of service, so we're seeing good, very good results at, at the site driveways. In terms of the, the site design, the 14 bays is really in line with the industry standard, which is typically one truck bay per about 7, 7,500 square feet of, of building area. And the use of it, of, the number of truck bays does not translate to trip generation. So, you could have a land use that has trucks that are staging and are waiting in a bay and sitting for time, whereas you may have another use that has more activity and trucks are coming and going. So, the number of truck bays does not necessarily translate to the number of trips. It's more of a standard, as I just described, based on the building area. In terms of the site access, Ben Crater's done a great job of, of designing the site with greater geometry at the northern access that would serve the trucks. Jefferson, Jefferson Road, which is, you know, beneficial to trucks, is actually a 45-foot wide roadway alongside frontage, so that works well in terms of geometry in, in and out of the site. And Larry, have I missed anything? I'm, I'm just trying to hit the, the high points in terms of concerns tonight.
Yeah, well, based upon the way the structure is designed, give the board and our neighbors a sense and comfort level as to what type of user you would not anticipate seeing here, given the orientation of the structure, the size of the structure, the layout of the loading area and the like. You could probably cross a few off the list, and I think that would tie into intensity of activity, particularly off-hour activity.
Thank you, I didn't, didn't get into that. So, over the last several years, there've been, there's a, there's a, actually 10 years, let's say, there's been a real transformation in terms of warehousing, as e-commerce has come in to become a very big player, you see shopping centers not as busy. So, we've worked on many of those projects, and they're, and they're much larger, much more intensive projects. The warehousing, that's generally referred to as a high, high cube warehouse, and in ITE, the land use would be land use 1, 155 is, is a very common one, which is fulfillment set. And that type of use is usually a, a much larger building. The average size is, is on the order of 800,000 square feet, you know, eight times the size of this, would be cross-docked, which means you'd have loading, truck loading on one side with incoming goods, and then truck loading on the other side without going goods, and that's where you get the Sprinter vans and a lot of volume that, that is not what we're proposing here. So, we just want to make that very clear, we're not, we're not an Amazon-type fulfillment center.
And, and just go to a little more detail, John, and granted, you don't have a crystal ball, and we don't even know if our tenancy is going to involve 24/7, and I'll say that again, we're not certain, but it's not prohibited under the code, our use is permitted, and we want that flexibility, which we think is our right, but we don't know. But, take the board through your best guess as to what they might see any given hour overnight. I think that there might be a concern unfounded, particularly by our neighbors, and I understand they're close to us, that there might be trucks all night long, coming and going every few minutes, 1 a.m., 2 a.m., 3 a.m., right up until daylight again. While you don't know for certain, based upon what you do expect to come here as a use, what you know won't come here as a use, and the structure we do have, what would you estimate you would see any given hour overnight here?
Right, so, it does vary by tenant, so, within the last year, we worked on a alcohol distribution facility that was in Clifton, and their hours were very much business hours, like 7 to 6, where they would receive, they would have employees working, and they would have, they would receive and then distribute product in trucks. So, that's an example where they actually had no overnight. If we would have a use that would happen to work or operate 24/7, we, the IT that I mentioned earlier gives us some guidance on what those truck trips would be like. So, again, the land use 150 and ITE known as warehousing, the IT has more data recently and compiled it online, so we have, we've got access to it, and they studied about a dozen sites specifically for trucks and tractor-trailers, and by hour, they have studied those 12, approximately 12 sites, and compiled percentage by hour of inbound and outbound. And when I apply the size of facility we're proposing, again, I saw no, no activity basically 10 at night to 2 in the morning, and then after that, I start to see about a. 10:00 at night to 2:00 in the morning, and then after that, I start to see about a truck an hour for the next several hours. I get into one truck in, one truck out, 4:00 to 5:00 in the morning, and then 5:00 to 6:00 in the morning, one truck in, one truck out, 6:00 to 7:00 in the morning, two in, one out. So a very low volume of trucks, which I think, you know, I think the suggestion by some statements tonight is that it would be quite a different land use and it's much more intensive than what we are actually proposing.
That's very helpful. Thank you, John. Mr. Chairman, we have no further direct testimony. Mr. Harder, we make him available to any questions of the board, the professional staff, and then the public, of course.
Mr. DiPiero.
The volume of trucks coming in from 2:00 on, one per hour, okay? If I were a resident, wouldn't make me feel better, because that means the truck backing up at 2:00 is going to wake me up. And one at 3:00, that's going to wake me up too. And one at 4:00, that's going to wake me up too. So that doesn't settle my concern. If I lived there, my quality of life would still be shattered all night long, even with one truck backing up the way that's oriented. If it turned the way I recommend, where they're backing up facing Jefferson Road, okay? That sound is muffled by the entire building, okay? And the chances of those residents being wakened every hour, even for one per hour, will be greatly, greatly lessened. And the other thing I noticed, when the presentation was made, you're going to have one office in the upper left-hand corner and one office in the lower, the lower left-hand corner. If you orient the building as I suggest, you would have one office in that C part, which would be on the left side, and the other office on the other C part, you know what I'm saying? You now would have both offices facing Jefferson Road if you put, make the offices there. They could each have their own sign on Jefferson Road. So my concern about the quality of life for the residents has not been abated.
Understood. And we're going to consider that, Mr. DiPiero, between now and the next public hearing, your suggestions. You had two good ones. We first talked about sliding, structure west towards Jefferson, and then you discussed reorienting. The latter, I'm not an engineer, but I'm not certain that can be accomplished, but we're going to take it under advisement and see what perhaps can be done that works with the applicant and the township.
Thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Matthew, have questions of this witness?
Mr. Harder, on the ITE data for truck trips, what was the total number of trucks per day? The average?
Approximately, Gordon, approximately 30 in, 30 out.
So about 60 trucks a day. Was there a range on that? Did they give it? I didn't look it up beforehand, I must admit. Is there like a range? Like, that's the average, right, of a dozen samples? Was there a range to it, is what I'm asking?
Whether, well, whether it was an equation or an average rate?
More like, okay, you got 12 samples, and you add them all together, and you divide by 12, and you come up with 60 trucks for...
Correct. It's really an average of the data that's provided.
Yeah, sometimes they give you the range, meaning the low end might be 30, the high end might be 90. That's what I was kind of curious what the range was.
I'd have to look that up. You're right, it does vary. Like I said, I worked on the use that had no drops overnight, and then another one that could be 24/7. So there is some variation in those numbers.
It's important that we understand the variation, because what you're giving us are, as you say, averages. I know in the 50s or 60s, the Air Force did a study and came up with the average pilot so that they could make one-size cockpit. And they found that not a single pilot fit the average cockpit. All right? So it falls into Mark Twain's comments about lies, damn lies and statistics.
This is how traffic studies are done.
I know. I'm making fun of you a little bit.
We're following what, you know, counties would require, GT would require.
This is what we have. This is a tool that we have, and it's better than nothing.
I would agree with you on the basis of the total traffic generated, but when we're talking about truck trips, just, it just, in this case, is a little different, because we're thinking of...
Part of the problem is that unlike offices where we're just looking at cars coming in and out, with trucks, the user makes it very idiosyncratic. And to Mr. DiPiero's point, one at one, one at three, one at five at night, when you can't really make the noise levels fall to one that isn't going to disturb the residents. But my problem, I have no problem with what you're trying to do. My problem is the piece of property that you're on, because you have the residents right there. Because we've already, in the past, the building that's there is a lot closer than our zoning anticipated to the residential. So we're trying to work a way to give you what you need and give the residents what they need. And so this is a team effort on all of our parts here, is to make it possible to make this happen in a way that the residents don't wake up in the middle of the night and start cursing us, because they would like to have a nice night's sleep, and somebody's truck is waking them up. That's what we're trying to do here. So we really want you to take that message and find a way. And as far as I'm concerned, I've always believed that when you take like an office building and turn it into a warehouse, you are effectively abandoning the original use, and you're creating something new. And as far as I'm concerned, even though that office building had been granted a whole series of variances and things like that, I really would love to have you prove that you're worthy of those variances again. All right? And to have the building be within 100 feet of the lot line, or 100, what is it, 109 feet?
109.
Where it's supposed to be 150. If it was from a business, I'd say, okay, I can deal with that. But you have people in bedrooms sleeping. And that's why I think you have to meet a much higher standard of proof and show us how you're not going to interfere with the quality of life of our residents. Now, I'm sorry, I should have asked questions, but that's...
I just had one last question. It has to do with the trailer parking that's crossing the loading bays. Is there a minimum number that you need of those spaces or maximum? Or is it just, you just put, you know, you just basically provide a one per loading bay? Is that, I'm just curious? And maybe you're not the witness to answer that.
Yeah, Gordon, unfortunately, I don't know. That was my assumption, was one per bay.
Okay.
I have another question, if I may. The trailers, when they're parked there like that, overnight or multiple nights, whatever, aren't any of those going to be refrigerated trailers that are going to have refrigeration motors running?
I don't know.
Which is another noise level?
I don't expect them to be if the trailer's just dropped there.
Just another concern.
But it's something, we'll give you an answer. I understand.
Again, if the building's oriented, those would be up near the road, Jefferson Road, and further away from the residents.
Okay. Other members of the board have questions? Mr. DeDich?
Yeah, it's more of a comment, right? So we talked about one truck in the middle of the night. So in the nighttime or early morning time, there's no other noise happening in the environment at that moment. That sound or noise would be much louder than it would have if it was during the day, because there's other noise happening that is actually canceling that noise of trucks. So you've got to be very, very cognizant of, even if it's one truck, like Mr. DiPiero said, it's going to be very, very disturbing because of just the nature of the night and the noise levels.
Anyway, another way to say that, I guess, is the ambient noise during the day would muffle some of that sound, but in the middle of the night, there's no ambient noise.
Or at least a lot less.
Other than my snoring. My wife tells me.
Again, you have to meet the performance standards. You have to meet the performance standards one way or another, and we've never quite established how we manage to police or enforce the noise of something as individual as trucks coming in with their backup. And that, you know...
If they gain a complaint, the health department would send out their noise control employees, and they have equipment that they have training. So they would come there at the peak times of when a resident makes a complaint, and then use the equipment. And if you're over it, you get a violation notice, and they'll do it again. And, you know, that's what they're trained for. So that's something new. Persephone didn't always have that, but we have that now. So we have quite a few. So we get calls, especially during demolition and things like that, just to make sure that those things don't happen.
Any other members of the board or professionals?
I can go back to, and thank you for the data on the truck trips. Did you have any data on earlier in the evening, say 7:00 PM till like 10:00 PM?
Yes, it's quite low at that point. So I don't see anything projected 6:00 to 7:00, 7:00 to 8:00, and then 8:00 to 9:00, one in, one out, one tractor-trailer, one in and out. And then I don't see anything until really the next morning.
I think from like around 4:00 AM, it starts to ramp up a little bit.
That's when you see one or two trucks in an hour.
And then also, I know, I kind of asked this before, and I don't know if anyone here can answer it, operationally, what kind of tenant use are you trying to attract? I mean, clearly it's warehousing. It's not like industrial, or is it?
It's unclear at the moment. I mean, I think the applicant is leaving their options open, you know, trying to repurpose this asset they've owned for a long time. They're going to be working with brokers at some point, but a lot of that depends upon ultimately what is conceived and what is approved. That delta is going to probably dictate who's interested and who's not. So at the moment, it's completely unclear, I think.
But from the market and some of this testimony, a fulfillment center, does a 100,000-square-foot fulfillment center work?
No, the testimony was no, but I'll let Mr. Harder answer again. I think he said it was about eight times the size they would need over this. 800,000 square feet, you said, John, is typically the floor?
That's right, Doug. Right, typical fulfillment center, double cross dock. So I guess we'd have to rely on, assuming it's one or two trips an hour throughout the night, like you had said, you know, 2:00 to 3:00, one in, one out, 3:00 to 4:00, one in, one out, 4:00 to 5:00, two in, two out.
I think that's reasonable, and that assuming the use runs overnight, a tenant may not.
All right. Thank you.
Any other members of the board? Our planner have any questions?
For the driveway on the truck side, goes all the way to the back, I guess there was some discussion that that could be possibly shortened for the truck traffic. Obviously, there would need to be some sort of structure there for fire trucks to get through, but could that be shortened?
Right, that seems reasonable, as Ben described, the grass paper area could be extended, essentially a radius around to connect with the aisle.
Could it also be better graded in such a way so as to make sure that any flow of water goes out through that and then into the drainage system so that it doesn't collect in the back? Looking at the engineer, really, because, as you heard from some of the public, there was some concern about drainage back there.
Yes.
That would be an important piece of the puzzle.
Crater acknowledged.
Yep. All right. No other questions by members of the board? Are there members of the public who have questions of this? Just come up one at a time and get in a line and ask your question, identify yourself. And this is supposed to be traffic only, the things that this witness testified to.
Yeah, Suresh Rajagopalan, and I'm at 281 Raymond. My question is like, the traffic study that you're quoting is, are the statistics that you're quoting, I should say, the projections that you're quoting around, you know, different number of trucks going at different times of day, is that based on a statistical model?
It's based on actual studies of sites that are operating in traffic count stating.
And what, the studies that you are referring to, do they consider a property, you know, that is in a similar location and has similar factors to the one that this site is proposed? Because why I'm asking you this is, this, like in the town or the location, it's not only located near 287, but there's also Interstate 80. So there's multiple interstates here. So I'm just wondering what factors are going into the computation or those projections of truck traffic?
Oh, wow, it's loaded. It's hard to answer that, because there are studies that are compiled throughout the United States by ITE. So it would be a variety of sites, and I would expect if it's an industrial land use or warehouse land use, it would be near major roadways like we are in this case.
Okay, so that's an assumption, I mean, so the land use is a variable in the study, but there might be other attributes that are assumed. I don't know what those assumptions are. It would be good to know what those are.
Are you suggesting it can be higher than what ITE has studied it?
I'm saying the studies you, perhaps, because I don't know what those studies are, right? And I don't know what factors go into those statistics, right? So maybe it's the same land use type, but in a different location with a different number of interstates or roadway patterns. I don't know.
Well, I think the use itself is what's generating. It's not necessarily the roadway is generating, so it's the land use.
Okay. All right.
Next question, just come on up.
Hello. My name is Sachin Ramai, 66 M Le Place. Can I ask one question to the board? Am I allowed to?
And ask our attorney, and she will tell us if we can answer.
Is it related to the traffic testimony that was...
No. It's just, like, on the behalf of the residents, does the board allow us to give like time to present our case?
Yes, yes.
And how many days?
Yes, that, you will have a chance to provide your general comments, objections, everything like that, after all of the testimony is presented by the applicant.
Okay, so usually, how much time do we get from today on notes? Like 30 days, 40 days?
Oh, it would just be at the next meeting, whenever the next meeting would be.
Okay, so that, the meeting date, you let us know.
Well, if this, assuming this is going to be carried, tonight, we'll announce when the next meeting will be. There won't be another mailing. It'll just be this announcement today, and it'll be posted on the agenda on the website for the town.
Actually, Nora, I'm going to ask a question right now. When would be the next available date? And I'm going to ask the attorney what, once she has an indication of the available dates, when you, which would you prefer?
All right, can you tell November 6?
6.
That's the next one we have, right?
That's the next open one, yeah.
So Nora, for now, we'll certainly take that. We'll see what we can and cannot implement by way of the board's comments and thoughts. If we're not ready by the 6, we'll let you know, and we'll just carry on the record. But 11-6, that's first available, then that's what we take.
What we're doing right now, as we're discussing the next available date, the next available date is indicated as 11-6. At the end of this, tonight's testimony, the board is going to vote on having the next meeting be 11-6, and I suspect we will agree to that. And assuming that the applicant gets through all of their testimony, and some of that will be a function of how many questions they're asked, then you would have... will be a function of how many questions they're asked, uh, then you would have time to make, uh, a case as an objector. Either if you are represented by an attorney, they could provide, they could provide a case. If you are simply, uh, objecting as individuals, you can come up and make a case. Historically, we've limited the comments by the public who are represented by an attorney to having the attorney make the presentation and maybe ask a few questions of a few, uh, select members that, that attorney is representing, um, so that we don't overwhelm the time required and have, uh, multiple statements of the same sort. So that's the usual routine.
All right, so then, November 6 is the next date, meeting date. That time, maybe if you want, our attorney can represent us, right?
Uh, if the, if the applicant is ready to go on November 6, which the applicant probably will but may not be, that's, that will be, uh, determined by the availability of their professionals and things like that, uh, then November 6 would be the date. But once you have an attorney to represent yourselves, they can get in contact with Nora, and Nora would let them know if there's any issue with 11-6.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. So questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? If you please identify yourself.
Yeah, hello, uh, my name is Ramesh Nayar, N A R, 43 Ryan Drive. So a question to the traffic engineer. So I know we talked about the averages and, and, you know, most of the cases, uh, what is the truck traffic? But there is nothing that is stopping to have a bad, I mean, in case, you know, maybe 10 percentage, there could be a higher volume of track. There is nothing contractually you can stop having a tenant having a much higher volume traffic. There's, there's nothing. I know you presented the averages, that may be the averages, but there could be 10 percentage which is much, much higher. Is that accurate?
The volume could range, is, yes.
Correct. So, so I'm saying is while we are going through the best case scenarios and the averages, there could be cases, it could be much worse case scenario, and I don't think there is anything that we heard today, uh, through the Tony or engineers that, that can limit that. So I just wanted to highlight that, and that's what I got.
The land use itself and the size and the number of bays and the size of the facility would limit, you know, to some extent. But yes, there's a range of what, what could be generated.
Okay, and the other one is, can we get some study information that you have presented us? Is that part of the, the materials that you presented?
Yes, it's part of the record, it's on file with potential.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hi, Rakesh Shah, S H A H, 102 Gillian Board for Mr. Harder. Again, we talk about ranges. What is the max capacity of truck traffic that can move in and out any given hour?
The maximum capacity? I don't know how to answer that.
I mean, how many trucks could you move in and out of that facility in an hour? Period.
I don't have any to that.
Okay, I mean, again, we talk about ranges.
What, I mean, what is the measure of your, what are you trying to achieve?
I would like to know how many trucks, if I was a tenant, could I move in and out of that facility in an hour?
The question's lacking a lot of context, meaning are we just bringing a truck on and they're immediately leaving? Or is a truck coming on and they're unloading? What are they unloading? One pallets or two physically, what is it? I mean, there's a lot of context that, he's not being evasive. It's, your question's impossible to answer, okay?
Okay. So we're saying is we don't have averages across different tenant types that we can go and lay in. But again, Mr. Math mentioned this, others on the board have mentioned this. It makes a huge difference, right? Whether it's one truck an hour during daylight hours and five trucks at 2:00 AM. I can tell you, I can hear the garbage truck rolling in the neighboring neighborhood when it rolls in, and that wakes me up at 5:00 AM, not my preferred time to wake up. So this makes a huge difference for where that traffic is, right? Again, not against having industry in Precipity, it helps with our taxes. It's just that this matters, and right now, you're saying there's no noise study. These will have to fit within guidelines that we have to challenge later, right? So that is why the math and the, these numbers make a difference, and I understand statistics. But, you know, I'd like to know. It's going to be, yeah, it could be 50% greater than what we're hearing.
I can help you with some of that. We have some questions here. So what, what, what Mr. Math raised before was Mr. Harder testified as to the averages, which would be ITE norm, and we're going to provide the ranges, right?
And, and to be clear, it's, it's, it's the counted sites, and they're taking the maximum, you know, in a peak hour, and then they're averaging those, those results. So it's, it's a little bit, I think, more than part two than that, but.
Sure, and I, I leave it to your expertise, right? I understand that there are, the averages, which I deal with all the time, are much different than the norms, and that is the thing. Uh, I did have a question for the prior witness, if I could just state it. I don't need an answer, it's just to go towards what they're looking at potentially doing, if it's possible.
Yeah, you just asked the question.
Sure, it's, the conversation was, you're moving the building, the height is approximately the same, maybe it's a few feet shorter, if I heard that properly, but you're moving it 100 feet closer to people's homes. You move an object 100 foot closer to my home that's 40 feet tall, it's going to look big. And I'm wondering, will there be something that you can provide as elevation drawings of what people would expect to see from their second story bedroom window into the back of your building?
Yeah, so you'll ultimately see architectural plans, which are going to have elevations and renderings, but you're talking about as well as the floor section description. But we're not planning on providing that because we don't have the management, we figure distances and courses from your location, but you are going to see elevations as to what you will see at the rear elevation, the east side, is ultimately presented by our project architect for next week.
Hello, hi, this is Rakesh Govindapur, G O V I N D A P U R, 1162 Emily Place. So, so the survey was done by, what was the name of the organization, was it? ITE, was it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, um, when you start describing, um, the amount of traffic coming in and going out, the first topic that you mentioned was like, you know, the number of cars, the number of cars that are coming in and going out is, you know, is, is a lot, is probably a lot more than the number of trucks coming in and going out. Is, is that my understanding correct, or?
Very much so, yes.
Okay, all right. So, um, in IT.
In a peak hour, we were talking over 200 trips, cars, and we're talking, so the former use, just to be clear, uh, was up to 233 trips, passenger cars, and we're talking trucks, seven, so seven versus 230 is quite a difference.
Okay, so when you compare them, compare a truck versus a car, uh, the amount of traffic that congestion that may cause a truck versus a car, do you guys know, in IT, sorry, does, does it mean anything, like, for example, a truck might cause as much traffic as?
Warren County uses one, for example, a, a truck is, is equivalent to five passenger car trips, if that's what you're looking for.
On a highway or on a, on a way where you're taking left or right, coming out of the traffic, coming out?
That's just how they generally ask you to analyze trucks.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Prigida Desai, 228 Emily Place. So as far as I thought, I understand, this is going to be last mile fulfillment center. Is it correct?
No, no, we just talked about why it's not a fulfillment center.
What is it?
The reasons it's not a fulfillment, fulfillment center. It's more of a typical warehouse.
Yeah, but that is like a, that is like a small warehouse is kind of last fulfillment center, like it delivers to small businesses and small, maybe house, because it's, it, the way it has defined, like 50,000 to 150,000 a square feet is always a small flow plan, and that is also, so that is going to be a small amount of warehouse. So as far as I have, uh, known some research, I did some research, and it says that.
This is not the time to present your research, this is the time to ask a question.
Okay, so as far as I understood, that small centers need more, it creates more traffic, and it might be, they are saying the less truck, but I don't think it's going to be less truck because it's a small warehouse.
If you'll let.
Right, so what you're referring to would be, for example, a Sprinter van type of use that's delivering throughout the day, and that would not be accommodated by the parking that we have, so you would need a different stall size. So these are nine by 18, the 100 spaces that Ben Crowder testified to earlier, if you are working with, and Ben and I worked on projects that involve Sprinter vans, I, I want to say that parking stall would be on the order of, um, 26 feet long to accommodate a Sprinter van. So it's not set up for what you're describing.
Okay.
All right, there was another, yes.
Hello, good evening.
If you could identify yourself and your.
Mohan Krishnaraj, K R I S H N A R A J, 1137 Ryan Drive. The question is based on this, uh, assumption of this ITE, right? So on the positive side, people are saying about it, on the worst case scenario, how many, is there any kind of, so a projection is being made for accident or damages or all sort of things have been, um, considered as part of your, you know, identification based on the IT or something like that? How damaged is that to the resident?
Well, in a traffic study, one may do an accident study, but that doesn't relate to traffic generation or trip generation. I'm not really sure of the question.
Could you maybe rephrase your question?
Yeah, absolutely. Where you're saying it hourly one, you know, and then, um, in terms of the truck comes in, right, for hourly one in and out or something like that? So how much damage for the residence is going to be prone to go for an accident or anything like that? So that kind of, um, is any kind of analysis being made?
Uh, in this case, we didn't do a specific crash analysis, but what I think is important is that access, northern access is properly designed geometrically for trucks so that, for example, when the truck makes a right out, it's not approaching on the southbound traffic. So, um, Bowler has made sure that geometry is, is appropriate. So if, if that weren't the case, then there could be, you know, an issue with potential accidents, but I, I don't see why.
Because of the design here, it wasn't more into the technical analysis.
That's right. Nope, there were no comments from the township, no, in accident history.
Okay, thank you.
Ilenas Filgova, 25 Ryan Drive. You mentioned you worked on many projects like this. My question is, how many of these projects bordered residential area, like on average?
So we do a lot of work in Long Island, and the zoning is not, you know, ideal there, so it's pretty common in, in certain areas of the metro New York area.
So they bordered, I, I don't mean one house, I mean the pretty big residential area where people just facing that future warehouse. So my question is, you've seen it a lot, and any examples you can give that we can probably check out and see?
Well, I didn't specifically say that I worked on warehousing adjacent to residential, you just brought that out. But I'm saying that in, in my experience with projects in Long Island, it's common to have a scenario like this. I can't think of a, you know, a specific example, but, I mean, we're permitted use, so we're, we're following, you know, the criteria that's been established by the township.
Right, so that was my question, I guess.
Okay. Any other members of the public have any questions on this witness at this time?
Yeah, this is Rakesh Govindapur, 160 Emily Place. So, um, a quick question, or maybe more kind of clarification, uh, for the entrance for the trucks, entrance or exit, there's, there's only one entrance or exit for the trucks, right? So, um.
Yes.
For that entrance or exit, um, would, would like two trucks fit, like, you know, like an incoming truck, an outgoing truck? Would it, is it wide enough to fit two trucks?
Yes, it's been designed so if a truck is stopped to egress, an inbound truck could, could enter.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. We're not going for comments at this.
Just, just a request to the board.
Oh, that you can, you can.
Yeah.
So I know we went through a number of things, and there's a lot of things, the more we hear is a lot of concerning with a lot of different things. And I, um, my question is, doesn't matter how that, that whole layout is coming up one way or other, um, I, I'm not sure how much thinking that the board is going to do to even process to the next steps, um, you know, and, and then, you know, come to a conclusion, because that, our request, and I know we are going to have that discussion later, but I think this is something you should consider, you know, in a major residential community, demolition and major warehouse constructions coming in. I would request the board to really think this is something that is going to be, um, be, be helpful for the, or, or supporting the community. So that's something that you need to do, because I, I don't want, like, we spend, uh, just, this is my personal view, so bear with me, I'm not really against any of the businesses.
Frankly, that's supposed to do, be what we do.
Yeah, okay.
All right, that's our, that's primarily what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to do what's best for Precipity.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I just want to make sure that we spend six months and then, you know, we have no choice to, to, to come to a conclusion or prove it. I'm just trying to make sure that.
But it's within the context of the land use law, and we have, we're not always able to do exactly what we want.
Yeah, a lot of us, the first time doing it, so that's why we are asking sometimes stupid questions, so just bear with us, but.
There are no, there are no, because we recognize a lot of the public, this may be the first time they've been exposed to Precipity land use law.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's, it's actually really a team effort here. The applicant is supposed to tell us why we should give them, uh, what they need, but also to work within the context of what the community.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much.
So.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. All right. We are approaching 10:15. Some people are now past their bedtimes, and we are going to move that this case be carried. Do I have a motion approving, a motion to carry the case to November 6?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to move this hearing to November 6, 2023.
All right, with no, no further notice, this is, for everybody there, this is your notice. You're not going to get any letters or communications that there's going to be another date. This is when you're being told that this is going to happen. So if, if you're going to hire an attorney, if you're going to, uh, plan on, uh, continuing discussions here on this application, uh, as it stands right now, 11-6 is the date. If you have any questions, and if, in fact, if you have somebody that you wish to appoint your leader or whatever, you can contact Nora, because she will be the one who have the information, and she will, uh, do the appropriate job of getting it to you, uh, that if there's any change to that date. So, uh, 11-6, if they change it, they actually may have to notice. So just, just, you know, if they concluded that they really want to be in January, then they may have to send out a notification, or they could show up on November 6 and say, we'd like to have this in January. That's their right. 7:30 is when we convene, there's, there's no guarantees that there won't be other business in front of it, but it's probably going to be its own case that night, right?
Can we also get a written letter of extension? Thank you.
There you go. So you're granting all the extensions, uh, as appropriate. And I've got a motion and a second, uh, to move to 11-6. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you for your time tonight, folks.
Thank, thank you. Yep.
Larry, could you email me the exhibits from tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
I hear a motion. I hear a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'm already standing.
All in favor, aye. Anybody opposed? Nora will throw you out.
Yeah.
Thank you, one.